Good evening. The June 25th, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a PEACH form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line screen form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thorough, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Thorough, would you like to read our mission this evening?
It would be my pleasure, Chairman King.
Thank you.
We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it would be "student-centered" because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality and clarify expectations, and get better. We will not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. Thorough. Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of TV and Media Production, Public Relations, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
The last three words of your leadership team statement, "a legacy of success." We have someone here, I think, who embodies that tonight to be our inspiration. I've known Nancy Atkinson now for twenty-two years. I knew her first when I was a television reporter and would go and enjoy some of her productions, for personal and professional reasons, of course, but certainly have come to know her even more through things like madrigal dinners, which go back a few years, through Golden Apple events, through Veterans Day ceremonies, and countless other events throughout our community. You may not know that Nancy, or Mrs. Atkinson, or Mrs. A retired just a few weeks ago after thirty-three years with our school district. She joined us in 1986 at Madison Street Academy, then in 1995 moved to Bellevue High School. Were you there when they opened it?
A year after.
A year after they opened, okay. And then eleven years ago moved to Westport High School for the MECA program. So I think that Nancy embodies a legacy of success, and I'm anxious for her to share some words of inspiration with you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Kevin, and thank you for inviting me to do this. I've been blessed for the last thirty-five years, or thirty-three years, in this county. As a music teacher, I've taught all grade levels, K through 12, and particularly high school chorus and orchestra. In Marion County, I was lucky to work in schools where the administrators respected the arts teachers and were supportive of what we did. Encouragement from administrators is a real confidence builder to those of us who need to venture out by teaching in a less conventional manner. My classes have always included journal writing, yoga, meditation, discussions about philosophy, lots of movement, and numerous field trips. I've also had many supportive parents who are also supportive and open to new ideas. Teaching is both invigorating and exhausting, as well as magical. There have been times when I actually found the lost chord during a rehearsal, and many of you who sing in choirs know what I'm talking about, only to lose it again without realizing how I had ever found it in the first place. There have been times when a student has struggled immensely to learn a skill such as playing a violin, or sight-singing, or matching pitch in a choral setting, only to have them suddenly succeed after numerous months of hard, frustrating work. They are then lifted from their previous plateaus and excel more rapidly than many of those who learn these skills immediately. After so many years of teaching, I could never tell who those students might be, so I was determined to believe that every student could do this. This requires great patience and persistence, both the student and the teacher. On the other hand, there have been times when I've taught an AP Music Theory class or Dual Enrollment Music Appreciation, and I knew I was on fire. And children are raising their hands and jumping up and answering questions, and I just know that I've gotten everything across, only to give them a quiz the following day and only have the majority score fifty percent or lower. So, you know, I didn't reach anybody. At Madison Street, I was able to form an international choir of K through 2 students. These children were adept, because they were such young children, at learning songs in various different languages. They wore these costumes, represented various countries, and performed often for the community. They were adorable, but they were also smart and professional. Back in 1988, a colleague who was hosting a group of middle-school-age students from the Soviet Union brought these students to Madison Street for a special presentation. There were numerous performances by our orchestra, Spanish dancers, and the international choir. One of the songs sung by the international choir in Russian and English was "Pussegda Bul'ya Sensiya," written by a five-year-old Soviet child, meaning "may there always be sunshine," which indicates that children all over the world want the same things. After we sang it, the Soviet children asked to sing it with us. Mind you, this time was during the last stages of the Cold War. The Soviet and US adults in this audience alike wept at experiencing this beautiful moment in time. In 2018, I ran into a former student, now in his late thirties, whom I had not seen in twenty-five years. He remembered this event and said he now understood the powerful significance it represented. He also thanked me for including him in the international choir. In 1995, when I moved to Bellevue, I realized immediately how very much high school students were like elementary school students. They appreciated stickers and praise. They also found that dedication to a belief in what was important to them would lead to success and happiness. Teaching high school, however, had different kinds of requirements. There are more district and state organizations and national organizations for music performance assessments at the solo, ensemble, or choral, or instrumental level. There are college applications, SATs, auditions. Students have to learn to balance all that they want to do, and they want to do everything. Interestingly, though, most of the students enrolled in the AP, or Dual Enrollment, or other academic academies, in addition to performing in several performing art groups, sports, as well as working jobs outside of school, proved to be the most successful. I don't know how they did it. Many of these students I've kept in touch with over the years. Several have gone on to major in music for performance teaching, music therapy, or music industry, and others have flourished in other fields, such as medicine, law engineering, education, entrepreneurship, or business. Early on at Madison Street, I received a beautiful letter from a parent of a kindergarten child thanking me for bringing her daughter out of her shell. She attributed my music class to the main reason, her child was enthusiastic about school. Quite honestly, the child was very sweet and quiet, and because she was not particularly animated or talkative, she never required or received any special attention from me. As honored and flattered as I was to receive such a kind letter, I was also made aware of how much an impression we make on children when we are not even aware of it, and it was a little scary. The reverse is also true. Students often discover and understand the impressions they make on their teachers later on. As a teacher, it is most important to care about your students and to make sure they know you care about them. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end.
Don't sit down, Nancy.
Miss...
No.
I can sit down. (laughing) Ms. Stacy.
I think I've known you twenty-seven years. And my two children, I cry, I'm about to cry, okay? Help me, y'all pray for me, I can get through this. This is probably one of the most fabulous teachers in this county. When you left Madison Street, it was so sad. My kids were gone, but I was so sad because I feared you had retired. I didn't know what had happened, you know? Someone just told me you weren't there, and I said, "Oh, my goodness." And so then I found out that you had stepped it up to a higher level. And you are probably one of the greatest inspirations in this county to the most students of any teacher I've ever known. Thank you.
So when you stepped it up, my son was at Bellevue High School.[726.13][726.13](laughing) And yes, he was. He was a basketball player, but he also loved music. And the one thing that you and Lori Reader and the others that were there, you were able to bring all the students together. I remember those talent shows in that gymnasium where people were singing and dancing that had never really been in music before, but you bridged that gap between the arts and academics at that time, and it was fabulous. You will be missed. I already know she's going to do a lot of volunteering. And thank you for the years and years that you dedicated to our students and to making music such a part of our system. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you so much.
From one Nancy to another, and another Nancy. And mine was at Westport in the MECA program. He was on the theater side, but I've obviously, you know, known about you and been familiar with everything that you've done, and I think about thirty-three years. And I can't help but think about, what are you going to do next? Just because of the energy and the passion, and I'm sure you'll rest a little bit, but it is just enormous, the impact that a veteran teacher makes. And to leave that and realize it, I think it's going to take a little while to truly sink in. Yes.
Right now, we're still on summertime, you know?
Right, exactly, which is normal. So, you know, you're relaxing and having a great time, but just thank you. Thank you so much for all of the influence that's been so positive that you've made on this county.
Thank you so much.
My children still talk about you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. For, I can hear in your reading that you have compassion and passion for the job that you did, and it showed because of how many kids that you influenced over the years. Not only the kids, apparently, the parents as well. So your reach went further than the classroom, and I think that's to be one of the goals of education, that it goes beyond the classroom. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations on your retirement. And when you spoke about your students, and you're like, felt like you were teaching them, and you knew they were going to do well until the next day when you tested and they didn't, but when you were talking, I know, I listened to everything you said, (laughing) but I didn't understand music, but you might have to teach me a time or two after that, but I could understand why they were so involved. And you were such an asset, and I can truly tell it's a true loss that our students no longer have you as their music teacher. And I wish you much success, and please come back and volunteer, (laughing) because you have so much to give, and our children in our community need people just like you. And that's the truth. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
But enjoy it. You deserve it.[918.56][918.56](laughing) We're long extended summer.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 25th, 2019 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Thorough, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 18th, 2019 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thorough. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 23rd, 2019 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thorough. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 25th, 2019 Appointed Superintendent Search Firm Committee?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thorough. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed, five-zero. I will now, you know what, before we move, is that we have some visitors, and I guess it was good I waited, because this evening, we have some Boy Scouts with us. We have Colin Boni from Troop 415 from Crystal River, Florida, and he will be observing the meeting as part of which badge requirement is in communications. If you would like to stand so the board can acknowledge you this evening, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And we also have Brady Bauer from Troop 72 from Ocala, Florida, and he's also here for communication, and he's standing up too. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to, or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Elena?
Yes.
Do we have any speakers this evening?
We do. Mr. Scott Clark?
Scott Clark, 4928 Southwest 58th Place in C-L-A-R-K. What I'll have to tell you?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. Good evening. My name, as I said, is Scott Clark. I'm a parent of an upcoming fourth grader and kindergarten student at Madison Street Academy with two twins on the way in a few years. I have had the wonderful opportunity to be part of our PTA, serving as its president for the past two years, as well as on SAC every year that I've been at the school, and I've been asked to deliver a message to you from a number of invested and concerned parents. On the school board logo is a mission statement, as it were, that states, "Developing successful citizens, every student, every day." This is a huge responsibility and an incredibly worthy one. It declares that no one gets left behind, that no one goes without, and that no one is excluded. I join with other parents from my school who are stunned by the recent decision by the school board to eliminate the position of Student Services Manager from not only our school, but Dr. N.H. Jones in Eighth Street Elementary as well. The job description, as you know, states that his or her primary function is to implement disciplinary procedures and policies to ensure a safe and orderly environment, along with twenty-four specific functions. I'd like to address some of these functions and demonstrate how losing this position would adversely affect the students at these schools. We live in a very different time than when most of us in this room were elementary school students. It is now a world where I, as a parent, have to learn what a code red is and what a code yellow is, where I have to trust that the school will be able to do everything it can in case a madman comes on campus, and where I have to have hope that my children will, above all things, remain safe in a dangerous world when they are at school. To eliminate this position at any school in our district or our state simply defies believability and credibility. Madison Street has had a number of these codes last year, and I am thankful for a Student Services Manager that has handled his responsibilities professionally, capably, proactively, and because we are dealing with frightened students tactfully. In four years, neither I nor any parent I've spoken to have ever been worried about our children attending Madison Street, even in light of these far-too-frequent codes. None of us want there to be a vacuum of leadership in the area of safety at our schools. Benjamin Franklin wrote in 1735 that "an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure," and he wasn't writing about health, he was writing about safety. And this is an area where we can surely have unanimous agreement. The Student Services Manager, along with, according to the job description, is also responsible for ensuring safe and orderly transportation, which is especially important at Madison Street and at Dr. N.H. Jones, where we have no buses. The times before and after school can be easily chaotic, but our Student Services Manager has been outstanding during drop-off and pickup times, and has an incredible rapport with all of the parents who are waiting, both patiently and sometimes impatiently in line. The Student Services Manager also handles disciplinary issues. What I have seen in our school is a Student Services Manager who is proactive in dealing with discipline, someone who is so involved in our schooling with the students that he is able to deal with a myriad of situations before they become problematic. I've seen firsthand how he was able to successfully address a behavioral issue with a student before it became an actionable offense. I believe that he is just as responsible as any other factor in the low disciplinary rate of our school. Losing this position will, I believe, inevitably, and perhaps even necessarily, lead to an increase in discipline and behavioral issues at our school, and assuredly at the other schools as well. The last essential function pointed under the job description states to, quote, "perform related duties as assigned." At our school, our Student Service Manager does so many of these duties that it will be impossible to have them replaced. The Student Services Manager is our magnet coordinator. He's in charge of the lunchroom duty. He's the volunteer coordinator, the field trip coordinator, the safety committee chairman, the sponsor of safety patrols, our fifth-grade advisor, and most importantly, a daily encouragement to every one of our students, knowing every one of their names. This is the position that the board is choosing to eliminate. This position is not just needed at Madison Street Academy, but at each and every one of our schools. This is a huge part of making our schools run smoothly and safely. I, along with a number of our parents, many of whom have written letters that we can provide, believe that this decision to eliminate this position must be reconsidered and should honestly be reversed. I thank the school board for their time and trust them to ultimately make the decision that is best for the students in Marion County, to ensure that we continue to develop successful students, successful citizens, every student, every day. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but if not, I implore you to live up to the Marion County Leadership Team statement shared at the beginning of this meeting, to always put students first, and to take a close look and a long view of what is best for each and every one of these students at Madison Street and these other schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another speaker?
Yes. Dwayne Gray?
Hello. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Dwayne Gray, 10071 North Nanches Loop, Danellin, Florida. I'm the ROTC instructor at Danellin High School. My first year there, I just retired from the Air Force, and I got a team here from Bellevue, and we're representing, we were at a camp this May, right after Memorial Day weekend, where we joined three of the ROTCs in Marion County school system together to put on a camp for the kids to teach them about leadership and develop citizens of character, and we had about ninety there, so I want them to introduce their stuff.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel Mike Cook from Bellevue High School.
Master Sergeant Thomas Young, Bellevue High School.
So at this camp, we're developing the citizens of character. We have about ninety students there, and we're calm out. We took the phones from the kids. We didn't get on our phones, so we're at Camp Kiwanis, and we're having a great time. We just got through with our PT on the second day we were there. It's, you know, it's a couple days after the Memorial Day weekend, and we have a female chaperone who comes in around dinnertime, who's going to sleep with the female cadets to make sure they're safe, and she comes in with some video, and she walks up to us, and then she's like, "Can you believe this? There's a fire down the road." And I got video of it, and we're like, we had no idea, right? So we jump, we go and get our phones, we're jumping on our phones, and we find out the fire is one mile away, or it's actually five miles away and one mile from forty, and they're talking about closing forty. Well, that's our only entry point in and out. So we meet and we decide, hey, we're going to email the principals immediately, give them a few minutes to digest it, maybe look it up, and then they'll give us, and then we'll call them if we don't get a hold of them, because it's like 8:30 at night. It's getting late. You know, they've evacuated five hundred houses already, and we're out there, didn't have a clue. So we email our principals. Seconds later, Principal Martin calls me up and says, "What's going on?" So we tell him the story. He hangs up, he's going to get with the superintendent and the other principals, and they're going to come up with a plan. So we're like, hey, let's keep it down low with the kids, let's not tell them, because my background is disaster relief. I did the BP oil spill, I've done tsunamis, I've done hurricanes, typhoons, nuclear disaster in Japan. Stuff takes time. So I'm thinking, let's not get the kids revved up, let's get them to bed. You know, if we have to wake them up at six in the morning, we'll call it a fire drill, get them accounted for, and get them out. Well, my phone rings again and says, "We're meeting right now, we're going to come get the kids." And I'm still thinking, okay, I'm going to get dinner done, get them to bed, and we'll see, and we'll see how it goes, right? Probably thirty minutes later, the phone rings, and it's the principal, he's like, "We're coming now, we got three buses in tow, we'll be there in no time." I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" I said, "We better hurry up and tell these kids," you know? So we pull the kids together, we hand them out their phones, and we tell them, and we say, you know, "We don't know when this is going to happen," and by the time those words got out of my mouth, Dr. Mayer and the principals show up. I mean, they're decked out in high heels and dresses, they're rolling, they're rolling in like some general, you know, who takes over the scene, and they're just, they're just taking over the scene, and they're going to make it happen that fast, and we're like, "We don't even have these kids packed yet." You know, that's how fast this happened. You know, it took me two months to clean up the BP oil spill and get that rolling. And Marion County public school system's going to kind of embarrass my Air Force that you can pull this off in a couple hours in the middle of the night. You know, in the summer, where do you find bus drivers? In the summer, at night, get them to the bus barn, get it unlocked, fueled up, and get them into the middle of the National Forest on time. I'm like, this is very impressive. So I'm going to come up and shake her hand, but oh, no. She's tied up with a kid saying, "Oh, we're all going to die. We're in the National Forest, we're all going to die." And I'm, you know what? She's a professional, I'm going to let her handle that, right? So we all got on the bus, we're out of there, we go to our different schools, the vice principals are already pre-staged there, with food, by the way. Parents are in the parking lot picking up their kids. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better, quicker scenario. And even kids that didn't have their parents there to pick them up, they had administration on staff that were taking them home in the middle of the night. And we're talking midnight, 2:00 AM, they're on the road dodging deer and everything else. So we just want to say thank you to Dr. Mayer and the principals for pulling off such an event. You know, we were thoroughly impressed. The children were the priority, and you guys pulled it off in a great amount of time. And I mean, it was a disaster. My Master Sergeant, he's taken a kid to the hospital because his mom had just been in an accident and was in an emergency room. in an accident and was in an emergency room, so we were a little shorthanded in dealing with all that. So I want to thank you guys for rolling in and helping us control that scene. So we have a little gift.
Two, I guess. I know we've exceeded our time, but I just want to say, ma'am, what struck me is that you were on site, that's great, but every time you heard about somebody that was having trouble, any kid that was having, you know, called like an episode adjusting to this, you wanted to go meet them, you wanted to go talk to them, and we just, we didn't have to do much. We could just kind of sit back, because we knew that it was in hand. So we have, like I said, he has one thing, and I want one thing to present to you to thank you for that.
This is our official coin for Danellin Junior ROTC, and we only give these out for special events, and people have helped out our cadets and have done something, you know, over and above the call of duty, so I just want to present you with that, ma'am.
Oh, my heavens. Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
[applause] This is our official ROTC hat. On the back, we're developing citizens of character, which I know you guys are all about too as well, but we wanted to give you that on behalf of both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you, Dr. Mayor.
Yes.
I got a question.
Yeah, I want to say thanks for the two.
I got a question. I see Principal Martin back there. I heard something when you were talking. You said they were out there, you said they were out there in high heels and dresses. Did you take a picture of Wade Martin in high heels and dresses?
It was too dark that night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your service. Yes, and your service for our kids, too.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what the other other speakers were going to be about. I do not want our speaker to think that we are not going to address your concerns, and I have a feeling probably at the end of this board meeting, this board will share their concerns or thoughts about what's going on. It's just kind of a protocol thing, so I just, I thought maybe the second speaker was that, I just assumed. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the job description for the superintendent and related board policies 3.21, 3.22, 3.23, 3.24, 3.25, 3.26, and Board Policy 8.62, data protection?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Mayor? We don't vote yet.
The job description for superintendent and related board policies 3.21, 3.22, 3.23, 3.24, 3.25, 3.26, and Board Policy 8.62 are new and comply with Florida statutes.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the job description for the superintendent, the related board policies, and Board Policy 8.62, data protection? Seeing none, board? Seeing none. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to adopt the 2019 through 2023 procedures for the Independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee, ICROCK?
Moved.
Wait, not yet.
Oh, sorry. The 2019 to 2023 procedures for the Independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee comply with Board Policy and Florida statutes.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2019 through 2023 procedures for the Independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee or ICROCK? Seeing none, board, any discussion?
Need a second, motion in a second.
I do need a motion.
I did.
All right, moved by Ms. Thrower, second by Mr. Cummings. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I got ahead of myself.
Proactive selves.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C-8.1-C18.3?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $18,207, $2,500 to College Park Elementary School from their business partner, Meadowbrook Church, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, $3,053 to N.H. Jones Elementary School from Dr. N.H. Jones PO, $10,654 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Dr. N.H. Jones PO, $2,000 to North Marion High School from North Pride Quarterback Club, Inc. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Thrower, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed 5-0. And Ms. McCall, would you like?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. As usual, when we get to this point, it's always nice when we have donations given by our community. It certainly helps in everything that we do to help with student success, so thank you.
Thank you. Special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July 1st, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss health insurance update. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for July 18th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss school start/stop times, technology plan update, school planning update, five-year work plan draft, strategic plan, 2020 health, insurance and security update. The following regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for August 8th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss budget, general fund, one of three, and 2020 health insurance, if it's needed. All right, and we will begin with our reports and concerns. Dr. Mayor, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. Officer Berry, thanks for being here tonight. We haven't seen you in forever. So are you having a good summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, is everything going well? All right, well, we look forward to having you back soon, so take care until then. And again, we appreciate you and all the folks that work with you, so thank you for Going off the list of great things that I wanted to share with you all tonight, I want to circle back to our JROTC instructors, and they're very kind words, but I want to give kudos to Becky Rora and Phil Eppert, because before Mr. Martin even reached out to me, Ms. Rora had the buses lined up and ready, and drivers were on the way to go gas them up. It was, it was well done, and I appreciate them very much for everything they did that night to get those kids out, and we did, we got them out in about an hour. So, and kudos to all the principals, too, who were there, and actually, Mr. Martin, I think, was, he was in his pajamas and had to get changed immediately to join us to ride out there, so that was, that was good. But they, they care about their kids. It was great, it was a good night. Ended up as a good night. So we had our principal leadership meeting, oh, gosh, now it's about a month ago, and that's what's in the bags in front of you, the goodie bag from that meeting, and we are so blessed to have sponsors who help sponsor these meetings and are able to put into a fund so we can buy things like these, the treats for the principals, and so you have a travel mug in there and a keychain and some mementos from that meeting. So it was a very productive, very powerful meeting that we had, and we wanted to share that with you. And speaking of our principals, we got word today, just today, that Mr. Whitehouse, one of our area directors and a former awesome principal, has been accepted into the state's Brian Dasler's Leadership Academy, and so we are so proud of him. So he will get all of his information into the DOE by the end of the week, and then his institutes will start in September, and we are just very proud because the prestigiousness of that Leadership Academy and to have him as part of it, we are very proud of him, so kudos to him. Last week, Friday, I was honored to attend the Florida Arts Alliance for Education meeting in Fort Lauderdale. And at that meeting, it was serendipitous that Ms. Atkinson was with us, because Westport High School was recognized at that award ceremony, and they were recognized as being a Florida Arts Model School by the Florida Arts Alliance for Education. Now, not only are they a Florida Arts Model School, but they are, they are the only one in the state right now that is a Florida Arts Achieve School, and they earned that because they were awarded distinction in all the four areas, dance, theater, music, and visual arts, and that's a huge recognition, and we are so very proud of them for everything they did. And when they announced the award, they had to pause, because the gentleman announcing had to flip the computer screen to keep reading all the teacher names, because there are so many vested teachers that helped put this application together, along with Principal Cruz, and so recognition to them. And behind the scenes, as always, we would say, was Joe Crowder, who is our coordinator for the fine arts at the district level, and not only did she assist Westport in getting this exemplary application in and on time and so detailed that they were awarded this honor, she herself has been awarded an honor, and she is the 2019 School Administrator for the Florida Arts, Florida Alliance for Arts Education, and so these will be proudly displayed. This is Westport's award, and then we have Ms. Crowder's award. And Ms. Crowder was called away at last minute to handle some family things, and so it was an honor for me to be there to accept that on her behalf, and we thank her for all she does. She does a lot, especially behind the scenes, to make sure that our programs are successful and are reaching our kids, and we're very proud of that and that award. And finally, I had to get some information all organized. So recently, the Florida Legislature passed Senate Bill 77, 7070, which amended certification requirements. So you remember, we've had a lot of discussion here together and statewide about the Florida Teacher Certification Exam. So as a result of this amended certification requirement, the timeline for our instructional employees who are hired, who come to us not out of a teacher preparation program, who haven't passed their certification requirements, in the general knowledge exam, which we often refer to as just the GK, so that timeline has been extended. So previously, our folks, all teachers in Florida, were required to pass the GK by the end of their first year of temporary certification, and then they had two more years to pass the professional ed in any subject area exams they need to. But now, they have the full three years of their temporary certificate to pass the GK, and that is just huge. Now additionally, the state board, and huge thanks to them, huge thanks to them and to our commissioner, voted to decrease the first-time registration fees and retake fees, because you know, it's just cost prohibitive for a lot of our folks to take in all of these exams at once. So, you know, in our county, we continue with our test preparation, our free test preparation courses, and support for all of our teachers. Now, if one of our principals is considering hiring somebody with a temporary certificate that expires June 30th, also in 77, 7070, it now outlines that the superintendent can write letters for a one-time, two-year extension for these temporary certificates if there's extenuating circumstances, and that will also be a huge benefit to our employees. And a benefit to our employees, of course, is what I just said, but a benefit to our students, because, Kevin, ready? Because this happened yesterday. If we take a look? We turn up the volume?
I think I'm a bit nervous.
You're nervous?
We're nervous.
Surprise!
Surprise!
We have a few guests. We want to welcome you back to the SCPS family and here at Fort McCoy. We want you to have a home here, teaching fifth grade and an ESE classroom teacher.
I'm sure many of you recognize these faces. Could you two please come on up? This is Angela and Brian Masters, and they were here at a board meeting, oh, gosh, a few months ago, and they shared with you at that time their struggle to pass the certification exam and the amount of expense that they have put into this, the amount of time that they put into this, and were not able to continue as teachers, and they were fabulous teachers, and they went back to being parents and stayed with us, and they never, ever lost their dream, and they never gave up on us. And so we were so excited yesterday to be able to surprise you, and that took a lot of choreography on our part, but we wanted, I wanted to bring them back up because they're back, and we were able to hire them. So they are the newest faculty members at Fort McCoy School, so we just wanted, I wanted to bring you back so we could celebrate you this evening, so.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to say?
I can't.
As you can see, we were very surprised. We got people calling us in the morning, and she was saying, "Okay, well, we went to the interview, we've answered the questions, it went well, we feel good," but then we say, "Okay, we'll come back Monday." Okay, well, why? I mean, if we come back Monday, I mean, are we got it or not? So we went back, and we were happy to, and as we were walking in, Ms. Keiner was saying that, "Well, we just have a few more interview questions and things to go over with you." And I'm like, "Wow, okay." So we get to the back, and we had all these lovely people all of a sudden pop out of nowhere, at a total surprise, and congratulate us, and gave us such encouragement.
And we're greatly, greatly appreciative.
Well, and then I want to share, too, that you met Logan Johnson, who is going to be your area person, who takes care of our new teachers, and you started immediately telling Mr. Johnson how you've already been researching the curriculum, and you've been checking the curriculum apps, and you're already doing all of this prep work, and that just speaks to the caliber of you both and your character. So we are, we are so excited to have you back, welcome back, and we're going to support you, and we look to have you for the long term, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Glad to have you back.
Ms. Stacy?
I would like to say thank you. You know, I was just having a conversation, like in the last week, we were talking about, why can't children read? Homeschool parents that have just a high school diploma or not, even that, can teach children to read. And so it really just takes a good teacher that knows how to facilitate so much of this information alone, and you don't have to have all the fancy papers, certificates, and things. None of these homeschool parents have any of that, really, unless they're a retired teacher, or they're, you know, they're staying home and teaching, it's so rare. And I remember your story, and I was sad about that, because you, it's all about being able to reach, there's teachers that have PhDs, more than one, that can't teach us how to get out of this room in three hours, okay? My grandmother used to call them educated idiots, I really shouldn't say that as a board member, but that's what she used to say, so those are her words. You don't have to have all that, you just have to have a love for kids and a way to communicate with them, and I've thought about y'all since you were here, and I'm so glad things worked out.
Thank you.
And I know that the students are going to just really be, it's, we're all about the kids, and you are, too, and thank you, and I'm so glad things worked out, Dr. Mayor, the way they did. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're two great examples of when the going gets tough, the tough get going.
Exactly.
Yes, and I remember coming into education, I had my degree outside of education, and I remember needing to pass the general knowledge and general math and reading on the first year, and it's very different than what it used to be. You know, teachers that taught many, many years ago, they had their college degree, and that's really all they needed, and now there's just so many more requirements and tests and trainings and professional development that, and portfolios that are put upon new teachers, and it's just making it harder and harder to recruit people that have, as Ms. Stacy was saying, the heart and the love and the passion to do it, and you have that, and now you have it, so congratulations. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thanks.
Congratulations, we're glad you're back.
Yes.
When I was sitting here listening to this, I thought about one of my favorite authors, Langston Hughes. He talks, he has a poem about a dream deferred, and I thought about you not letting your dream be deferred, because if it deferred, it would have hanged and sagged like a heavy load or eventually exploded. So I thank you guys for hanging in there and coming back. So, I thank you guys for hanging in there and coming back and serving our students.
Yeah, our students are so blessed to have you both. I think I was exiting about the time you guys came in. But I know that whenever, I think a few times, a couple, maybe, I left my students with you, Angela. And I always came back to a good setting. And as a past teacher, I know. But you guys carry a passion that is inside that not everybody knows and understands, even sometimes in the educational field. But you guys have it. And don't ever let that little fire go.
I wouldn't want to ever teach in front of kids and let them see adults that say they have passion and have them question her or I that just because it got tough, we're going to stop or we're going to give up on you. That's wrong.
You led by example. You sure did. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Fort McCoy is my district. I'll have to come visit you next.
She's good.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Elena?
Just wanted to tell everybody that July 16th, you were holding on your calendars for a student discipline. You can take it off. An email did go out this evening from my staff, but that one has resolved, so you can take that day off. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Thoreau, we'll begin with you this evening.
Okay, well, first and foremost, I just want to wish everyone a very safe and enjoyable and celebratory Independence Day. The Fourth of July is definitely a lot more than the date. And I hope that everyone will remember that as you're celebrating and thanking veterans that you know, both in service and retired, for the sacrifices that they made. And get out there and have a great time. And hopefully, all the animals in Marion County will somehow make it through another fireworks display. That makes it hard for them. But anyway, it's definitely time to be honored, cherished, and celebrated. Next to that, I was given the honor of being able to read our mission statement, what our goals are as this board. And it's student-centered, always student-centered. And this puts us between a rock and a hard place when it comes to budget time, which it is right now. And I did want to clarify, Mr. Clark, that the school board hasn't dissolved the student manager positions at those schools. It's being proposed by the district as a cost savings measure. You know, we're in the middle of budget time. And as a new school board member, I'm learning that the whole process is pretty convoluted, actually, because we're having to do a lot of projecting, not knowing some very critical numbers. And to me, that just seems ridiculous, like there has to be a better way so that we can make better decisions. And I'm saying this because when it comes to our health insurance for our employees and their families, and when it comes down to the school-based staff, those are two things that weigh very heavily, I'm sure not just on my mind, but on the rest of the board. And having come from the school setting, having worked my way up from a teacher's aide to an ESE teacher, to a staffing specialist, to a behavior specialist, and then finally into this role, I've seen it over and over when you have positions and people making it look easy. It's because they're proactive. And it's because they're working the job. And it's because they're addressing all 24 of those components. So, then it looks like, well, the school doesn't have a problem. You know, they don't have very many discipline referrals, the parents are involved, the kids are good. Maybe we don't need that position. Well, it goes deeper than that. And I wanted to raise that tonight because as a school board member, I have the responsibility to balance the budget, you know? We all do. But at the same time, I am going to think about this long and hard because we have to walk our talk. And if our talk is student-centered and making sure that our schools have what they need to be successful at the school level, then the rest of it builds out from there. So, I am very concerned about taking anyone at this point from a school setting, kindergarten, paraprofessionals, you name it. Because these are the people that know the kids the best, that are the bridges to the parents, that are the see something, say something, do something of keeping our schools safe. So, I just wanted to acknowledge what you shared and I've lived it. So, we've got some very difficult decisions to make as a board. But that's why we're up here. So, thank you very much for speaking to us tonight. And with that, I'll just again reiterate, be safe, have a very happy Fourth of July, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I've, when parents come before us about things that we really don't know a whole lot about yet, I want you to know it's not our decision yet. We have not even talked, discussed it in our staffing plan. I hear about these things the same way you do, kind of in the shadows, unfortunately, which it shouldn't be that way. But I've also received information, I don't know if the board members have received it, that, well, besides the fact that they're cutting paras here and there, I mean, the memos have been going out that paras are being cut and different things. And so, I want to see what kind of layers of our administration's going to be cut also, since we're going to be cutting classroom paras and that sort of thing. Another thing that concerns me, I spoke with this board when this IPC clerk, this IPC clerk came up, remember, we had the memorandum, memo of memorandum? And I discussed my concern that we were moving the data clerks to a full-time position and that I've spoken to different people in the school system, that the secretaries and different ones said, well, you know, I don't really know why they're doing that because it's not going to really increase some of their days that much. If they've got like 15 or 16 years of service, it's really going to mainly just pay them for some vacation days, even though our teachers don't necessarily get paid vacation days. They get their 10-month contracts. And these employees had the whatever, 10-month contract, 11-month, whatever it was, however you calculate it in the months, we did it in the days. And I did check with other districts and I saw that other districts were not putting their IPC clerks to full-time 260-day positions. And I brought that up and I kind of fell on some deaf ears because it was something that I guess had kind of rolled along and we had talked about and kind of happened kind of in the night with the bargain people and everything. And I did discuss it. But the administration convinced us we just had to have these people. They had to be there 260 days for the sake of the schools. Well, there has now been a memorandum, a note sent out from, I guess it was from the HR department, I know exactly who sent it, I won't say any names, that said, congratulations, basically, the IPC position has been made to a 260-day position, a full-time position. But you don't really have to do it if you don't want to. You can remain on the 230-day contract or the 240-day contract. But if you want to work 260 days, you can. It's basically what it said. It's up to you, whatever you want to do. So, obviously, they were not needed for the 260 days, just like I was told, just like other districts informed me and like I informed my board members when we had a conversation about it. So, you can, each one of you can ask HR, the department or employee department, whatever department it came in, I can give you the person's name that sent it out later. And y'all can get a copy of that because the employees have been offered a 230-day. They have three IPC schedules now. We have, we have a job, we have an employee position now that has three different schedules. You can do a 230 schedule, a 240 schedule, or a 260 schedule. If you have, like, probably, I'll have to look at the vacation schedule. If you have probably 15 years in the system where you've worked as a school secretary or you've worked as whatever and you've transferred up to data clerk and you're in that position, you would be smart to go from the 240-day calendar to the 260-day calendar because you're probably not going to work any more days. You're just going to get paid vacation. So, you might work five more days, but the rest of it will be vacation pay. And so, anyway, I just wanted the board members to know that this has happened and that was my concern about it. And if all of the IPC clerks moved to the 260-day calendar and took all their vacation time, it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollar item. So, that would probably pay some of our school student service people, would probably cover two or three of them. So, and also pay some of our paras that we've taken out of the classroom. But obviously, if the employees had been given the choice as to which calendar they want to be on, this move was not a necessity. Thank you.
Before we move forward, I would like to request that we have a workshop on that and revisit that, the IPC and the three schedules and stuff. We need to take a good look at that. Look at that real quick. I say we look at it at July 18th before the next school year begins. So, we can add that to the July 18th workshop session. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that was everything? Okay, Ms. McCall?
Yes, the first thing I want to do is, this morning, the Public Education Foundation had their annual meeting. And they had a ribbon cutting for their new donor wall, which is called the Giving Tree, which is based on the book, the children's book, The Giving Tree. All of their donors will be listed, at a certain level, will be listed on that tree. But the one thing that really stood out was, I'm not sure that the board is truly aware of all the things that Spencer and Laura Barrett have done for the Public Education Foundation. Whenever they needed anything, Laura and Spencer would say, I think we can make that happen. So, that Giving Tree this morning was dedicated in the memory of Spencer Barrett. And Laura was there, along with Barrett Liner staff. And it was truly a wonderful ceremony and a tribute to the fact that Spencer Barrett gave and never expected anything in return. He was just truly a wonderful man. So, I wanted to share that this evening. The other thing I wanted to share with Mr. Clark, Ms. Becky Gorman has been in touch with me for a couple of weeks about the position at Madison Street. So, I reached out when she first contacted me to find out why. We actually tried to schedule a parent meeting that I could have with some of them. It just, it didn't work out. She went out of town and we couldn't get it there. So, the budget is very tight and, of course, we know we have to have a balanced budget. So, the reasoning behind the cut to Madison Street and NH Jones and Eighth Street is because the dean's positions are, the main thing that the dean's positions do, student service managers, they're now called, is discipline. And those schools, thanks to the principals and everybody that are there, have very little discipline problems. So, that was an area as they're looking at the budget. And I explained to Becky that we had not even seen the staffing plan yet. So, she sent to me, emailed to me, all of the letters of concern, which I sent to Nicole and Elena to please print off, which they are in your box. I knew Mr. Clark was coming. Not that the position and the man that was in that position at Madison Street was not valued, but as Mrs. Thoreau said, it is a difficult time and we are having to make some very difficult decisions. We want to be sure that our top priority are our students, without a doubt. And we will look at the budget and we will look at the staffing plan when it is brought to us and do our very, very best to make sure that our staff and our students stay our top priority. So, you have that promise from me. And when they looked at those positions at those three schools, they were discussing eliminating them because their major job description is the discipline. And they do not have discipline issues at the schools, they're smaller schools and they each have principal and an assistant principal. So, that was the reasoning behind it. So, but we will do our best when we finally receive that staffing plan to do what's right for our kids. I promise you that. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to reiterate what Ms. McCall said and Ms. Thoreau, that the students and staff at all the schools are of utmost importance to us. And we are going to look at the staffing plan and we will look at those positions. And we will make a good decision based on all aspects of what we have to look at in totality. We just came from FSBA training in Tampa and there were some enlightening things because it's going to be a tough year. And we have to be judicious and very wise and good stewards of any resources that we have coming into Marion County. My concern would be that, you know, those people that are going to be affected are not going to be adversely affected, that it won't be demotions or anything like that. And we're going to make sure, this board is going to make sure that those things are taken into consideration and that those schools are properly and adequately make sure the people are in the right places at those schools. So, we thank you for the concerns and we thank you for letting us know your concerns. Oftentimes, we hear things in the wind and we want to hear from the parents and the teachers and everybody, we want to know because we represent you all. So, thank you for letting us know that. I'm looking forward to, it's hot, y'all. It's really hot. It's hot outside. I broke out in a sweat just walking from the car to the building. But it's hot, so I want to encourage everybody, please be safe out there. I know we've had a lot of discussion about being out in the weather, but it's hot and we have to make sure we drink a lot of water and all that stuff like that. I'm looking forward to us getting these test scores in and seeing what's going to happen with that. That's been one thing that we've been working, the school district has been working hard on this year. And we are praying and anticipating some good news. So, we want to hear that and we want to see that. And we know that it's going to be coming up soon. I thank Chairman King for going ahead and scheduling the session on the IPCs. So, we will look at it. But again, it goes back to us making sure that we're doing the things that are right and getting those decisions right. Everybody's not going to always like every decision that we make, but we have to make the best decisions that's going to affect the great everyone, that's a greater number and it's going to be beneficial for everybody. So, again, we're off to summer, we got a lot of things going on. We're looking forward to the scores and the great work that we're going to continue to do together. And I know my wife is looking, I want to tell her happy anniversary, today's our wedding anniversary.
That's right.
And hopefully, we'll be home shortly.
And with that, may I just say one quick thing? You're leaving quickly. It's important for the public to know that we are continuing to work on our master board training.
Yes.
Together. Because, and it's, yes, our next training is Thursday and along with the superintendent, you know, we are doing our best to work together as a board and be able to hash out all of these concerns, issues, problems. Problems wouldn't be problems if they didn't have solutions. But we are working to build that rapport together as a board so that we can come forth with things, get them out on the table, hash them out, talk them over. Maybe the first, second, and third iteration of what we thought we were going to do ends up not being what we decide to do. But hopefully, it's because we were thoughtful and we were caring and we put kids first. I'm looking forward to Thursday.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Cummings?
Oh, no. Congratulations to Mr. Whitehouse and Ms. Crowder as well. Such a great prestigious honor.
Well, congratulations. Congratulations for 24 wonderful years. We'll try to get you out of here. When I was at the Florida School Board Association, I met with, by chance, an I-Ready rep. And so, when we had a little bit of discussion, we did approve more funds into the I-Ready today. But I mentioned to her that sometimes for the teachers and the students, there's a lot of testing. And so, I'm And so I mentioned the iReady and I also mentioned QSMAs and our teachers felt that they're tested too much. And one thing that she did say that stuck with me is she said, do not double dip. She goes, I always tell people not to double dip. So it made me, you know, reflect and think a little bit more, especially now that we're looking at the budget. And I would like to know how much we do spend on QSMA testing because now we've been officially told not to double dip. But I would also like a list of the expenditures or expenses of all our licenses and software to make sure that we are not double dipping or duplicating or buying unnecessary products. So if you could get us a list of that so as a board, we can analyze it, we can ask our constituents and people that are in the classrooms in the schools and that know what's going on, I think that would be a good start for us. I hear that it's difficult decisions and stuff, but you know what? For me, when it comes to the students in the classrooms, it's not difficult for me to make that decision, what is going to affect. I do not think we need to be taking anything out of our schools. The people that are in front of our students, whether it is the parapros, it's the deans, it may be other positions that I've heard rumors about, that to me is easy. I think we need to be looking at outside of the classroom to see what we could be cutting or maybe certain individuals that are not in a classroom setting, maybe they do need to be in the classroom in front of our students. Because you'll always hear me, the teachers and the people around there are key. And it always seems that the students and the schools are always the first that get the people and things removed. I had a couple of schools, the first time they tried to remove the deans, it's tough on the schools. And, and you hear it's a small school, even if it's a small school, it is tough that, and you even heard how relevant that position was. And Nancy, you said it too, like, you know, everyone's doing their job and it's not a problem until it becomes a problem because people are doing their job right. And just because they're doing their job right does not mean that it's not important or relevant. So as a board, I would, I would encourage us to really pay attention, analyze, listen to our community and what they're saying. Dr. Mayor, as a chairman of this board, I would appreciate it if you could inform this board when there are decisions that are being made that affect our community because frankly, it's embarrassing and it's hard for us to do our job when we are tagged in a social media post or we hear a rumor and sometimes it's, well, most of the time it is true and it's not. But we want to be effective leaders. So I'm going to ask that you please give us the respect as the board that have to answer to our constituents who think we make these decisions. So in the future, moving forward, I please just make us aware of these so we can understand what is happening. And I would appreciate that.
Certainly. And I, I would also ask that when you have concerns, that perhaps you reach out prior to a meeting and we could have conversation, much like Ms. McCall has had conversation, instead of thinking that, you know, at, at the board meeting, just, you know, pouncing would be effective. Because if we know ahead of time that you have a concern, we can do the research for you and we're pleased to do that.
Okay, thank you. As a board member, I look forward to hearing changes that are made in the schools moving forward so that we can answer our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, I don't believe I have any other concerns other than, again, the budget. We have big decisions. I look forward to us knowing everything so we can make wise decisions. Because when we are in the dark, we don't know how to make good decisions. And this, I, I have faith in this board and I know everyone sitting here wants to do what's best and what's right for our students. So, okay. With that, I will move forward. All right. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings.
Seconded by Mr. Cummings.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion, motion passed, 5-0, and our meeting is adjourned at 6:45 PM.